Hello and welcome to Stoughton Politics with this guy. I'm your host Noah Beata-Haron and I am very pleased today to be interviewing Steve Kayvey, the Select Board Chair.
Thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate it.
I mean, I'm very excited. So I'm gonna start out, you know, on the more background-y side and ask, you've been involved in Stoughton Politics for about eight years, is that true?
Yeah, eight or nine. I started off as a town meeting rep. And it was honestly for a very short amount of time. I started one year. I got onto the Finance Committee right away, but I have a background in finance and so it made some sense. And I think I'd only attended like two or three meetings of the Finance Committee by the time I was elected to the Select Board. So it was a very quick, quick time. I got a lot out of it, but also I got to see unfortunately a lot of the friction that existed, especially at that time, between different areas of government, between the Finance Committee, the Select Board, Town Manager at that time. And Stoughton was, I mean, it wasn't, you know, unfixable, obviously, because I think we're in pretty good shape now. But it was a very uncomfortable time, I think, and it was difficult to get things accomplished for the town. Because I think there were a lot of people who had a hard time getting past the animosities. But I think time has healed a lot of those wounds. I think we have a lot of, bringing a lot of new people periodically into town meeting has rejuvenated it. And as a form of government, I kind of oscillate back and forth as to whether I like town meeting or I prefer something else. But I can say that I feel like the government that we have now is very effective. And I think that they're getting good results, even if maybe not the most efficient.
Yeah. It fills me with maybe too much delight to hear you say that at the time there was a lot of animosity and it's gotten better. Because, you know, having only gotten drawn into Stoughton Politics through the recent school debate, and I understand that there was a school debate some eight, nine years ago too. But having only come into it sort of more recently, I heard a lot of complaints on Facebook and whatnot saying, you know, "We need to calm down tensions, things are way out of hand." And so it's actually kind of weirdly like calming to hear like, "No, things are better now than they were when you got into it."
Yeah, yeah.
Eight years ago.
Yeah, that might just be my perception also, but I think generally it is. I think, you know, there's still, there's gonna be friction. And when you have people who are passionate about their ideas, there's gonna be a lot of butting heads. And I think that in Stoughton, part of our reputation probably statewide, certainly internally, is that we are really not afraid of having these very, very serious arguments and being courageous and advocating for our point of view. And that takes, sometimes you see a lot of, you know, it can get pretty hot.
Yeah.
At the same time, when, time and time again, I've seen when we get to the end of the road, overall, things work out for the best.
Yeah. I mean, look, I come from a loud, argumentative Jewish family and we like, there is, there... An argument is a form of love as far as I'm concerned. Like if you can't be bothered to explain to people why you think you're right and why you think they're wrong, then that is a kind of disrespect. It's a belief that there's no way that they will be reasonable enough to listen to you.
Yeah.
Right? There's no, there's no way that you're going to like, you know, "Listen to my reasoning, think about it and reconsider your position based on new evidence." Like that's what not arguing sounds like to me, right? And so it's like, I'm always, I'm always there for the debate, for the argument. Like, I don't think we should be calling each other names. But I think that speaking passionately about why you're right, about why they're wrong, and reconsidering your position is like, that's fundamental to respecting each other as human beings as far as I'm concerned, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Personally, I'm a very introverted person by nature. I spend a lot of time like meditating on things and almost ruminating on them over and over and over again. So by the time I come to a conclusion on something, I feel pretty solid about it. But on the one hand, on the other hand, there have been times in my life when somebody made an argument that just, I was like, "You are absolutely right," and I was entirely wrong. And rather than, you know, being resentful or trying to find some way to, you know, eke out a win, I'm always like grateful for it. And like, "Thanks for helping me understand something I didn't understand before. I didn't even think of that way." And I think that's where we sometimes fail in our town is that even when a position becomes obviously flawed, there will still be some people who will latch on to it, like, you know, with a death grip.
Yeah.
And that's where we, I think, tend to have some issues. But the majority of people will see that and say that, "That's, you know, we can't do that. That doesn't make any sense."
We can't keep arguing this and that over and over again. Yeah, for sure. So you joined the Select Board only like seven, six, seven years ago, like pretty recent? I mean, not recently, pretty early into your Stoughton Politics career.
What is pretty...
Did somebody like tell you, "Hey, Steve, you gotta do this?" Or were you just like, "Well, I don't like whoever is there right now, so I guess I gotta do it."
Yeah, so my memory's not always great with the chronology, but there was some things that were going on in the Select Board at that time and I wanted to get involved. I actually wanted, I thought I wanted to, you know, I was very ambitious. So I wanted ultimately run against somebody out of the Select Board, a gentleman in particular. And he was the next one up. And I started the process of sort of, you know, knowing almost nothing and, you know, just sort of a very basic understanding of it. Started looking at how does this work? And joined town meeting, I was elected there. I got to know the moderator at the time, Adam Dawkins, who is a wonderful human being, was able to, you know, as a moderator, just help me understand the role of the town meeting, my role as a member of town meeting. I, the, I think actually the person I talked to before that was a former moderator, who at the time was actually named the moderator. But it was during election season that I was speaking with him. And he was very, very gracious with his time. And to the extent, he was a history buff. He knew every, the reason why every street in the town was named the way it was. And, you know, what I thought was gonna be a 15-minute, 20-minute conversation ended up being four or five hours. And it was, he was a busy man. And the fact that he has put that much time into, that enthusiasm into town government was very motivating. So I got started with that. We went to the organizational town meeting, which is where the various committees are voted for within the precincts. So I mentioned the fact that I would like to be on the Finance Committee. There was a vote and I wound up getting that seat. For at that time I was in Precinct One, precincts moved, so now I'm in Eight.
Finance Committee, like, my understanding is that there's currently three seats available on Finance Committee. Is it generally hard to fill those slots? Is it, if you're a person who's, you know, who is knowledgeable in finance and you're like, "Yeah, sure, I'd be interested in doing that," are you like a shoe-in?
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, I want to say that as the election that took place when Adam Dawkins was elected, there was also another gentleman who was elected to the Select Board, his name was Mike Sullivan. I didn't know him well, but he was a very nice guy. And he called and said, "You know, we're gonna be doing, in June, we do appointments. And if there's anything you're kind of interested in, let me, just let me know." You know, and not that he was, you know, offering me a specific position, but he also wanted to know that we have difficulty filling. So he wanted to know if he could help out in some way, you know, maybe say like, "Oh, three people are running for that, but like, you know, only one person, you know, nobody's looking for an appointment in this other place." And I didn't get back to him because I thought, you know, in my own experience with government, studying government, that you kind of had to be like a Thomas Jefferson. You had to know a lot of things and you had to really be very wise. And I was like, "Well, I'm not that guy," you know? And so I didn't, I didn't do it thinking I probably wasn't qualified. That's not true at all. And the fact is that we have a lot of roles that people, ordinary people who don't have any specialized knowledge can get into. Finance Committee is definitely helpful to have some sort of a financial background or, you know, an aptitude towards that. But it's not critical. We've had people on there who were some of our most thoughtful members who had no financial background.
Yes. I mean, I say this as somebody who saw that there were three spots needed to be appointed to Finance Committee and said, "Well, you know, I don't have particularly a background in finance. I have experience budgeting some things." But I sent Bob Mullin an email and I said, "Look, this is not my expertise, but if you're looking for people and there aren't enough, then go for it. I'm willing to do that work."
Yeah.
Because the thing is that, you know, my experience working with the PTO at the Hanson, where I met Kim, and my experience with, you know, the ReaderCon organizing that I do has always been that there is more work than there are people willing to do it.
Yep, sure.
And that like, you know, as much, like, sometimes it's important work that you need to be qualified for. You know, I wouldn't be running for town accountant, right? But like, sometimes you really do just need some football who are interested in learning the work.
Yeah.
And then it gets dumb.
Yeah, especially with the Finance Committee, which is a very large board, it's 18 people. The fact is that like, that gives you some flexibility to learn the role. And there's a lot of, there's a, like, there's a Finance Committee manual that the state puts out. There's information that you can, you don't have to walk in knowing it all. And you'll be, you're sort of protected by the fact that there's 17 other members who will also have opinions and some of them are very knowledgeable. And you can get to hear the people speak and you get to learn who knows what they're talking about, who maybe doesn't. And, or they can just make good arguments and you can find your way. With, there are some boards and committees where it's very refined. There's very few people. Board of Assessors, for example, there's only three people on that board and we actually have a very hard time filling it. So if anybody's interested in the Board of Assessors, it's a wonderful, wonderful role.
And does that also have like an August 27th or something deadline or is it just let them know?
Yeah, no, what I'll say is that we do all of the appointments and we advertise them and do them in June. However, we also have a rolling application process. If there's an open seat and you have an interest, just put it out, get in touch with Town Hall. And there's plenty of open seats, there's plenty of things to do. And there actually is, there's opening on the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
If you have some experience, I mean, truth is, if you just have an interest in it, that'd be great. It's a financial role and also people who have experience with property values or real estate, things like, or commercial versus, you know, industrial and residential tax rate type stuff like. But there's actually a training class that you're required to take by the state. I've taken it. They tell you everything you need to know. So like, if you can just more or less follow a PowerPoint presentation, you're good to go. But also things like, another example of a board where you really want to have people who have specialized knowledge is the planning board. It's five people. Town planners have a tremendous input on future of the town. And so that's one where we try to be a little bit more careful about who, the qualifications of the people going on.
Yeah, for sure.
Just about anything else is, if you have an interest, then we'll help you get the knowledge base to participate meaningfully on those boards.
That's great. Okay. We've gone like 15 minutes and I've asked my first question.
Yeah, I'm a talker.
That's how it's, no, 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 it's good. I like that. Okay. So I was interested in asking, how would you say your attitudes or relationships to Stoughton Politics have changed over time? Like, have you learned something in the last eight, nine years that you want to share with either younger you or with people just getting involved now? Like what?
Yeah, I mean, the, if you wanted to have any sway over the way people think, in my view, the most important thing that you have to protect is your credibility. You have to be honest, even if it's saying things that are hard to say. You have to be respectful and it has to be sincere. You have to sincerely respect people, even the people you disagree with. So your credibility is everything. And I've always been, because I'm introverted, I tend to not make, naturally make mistakes that influenced or harmed my credibility. However, I have seen a lot of people who may have had great intentions.
Yeah.
Blow up their credibility and essentially be completely ineffective afterwards.
Yeah.
And so doing that is, you know, that's the worst thing, that's like the, the worst thing that you can do to yourself is be careless with your own credibility. Beyond that, you know, it's just sincerity. It's okay to be wrong. It's okay to have an opinion that's not popular. It's okay to speak out, so long as it's respectful. I think, I think people generally appreciate the fact that, you know, that if they don't agree with you, at least you're being kind and sincere. And if you're doing that, I think you've got, you know, a great future in doing this. I guess the second thing is, things do get hot and that's gonna happen. And, you know, I've been, I've had a couple of like interactions that were, you know, frightening at times, in a sense. But unfortunately, you do also have to be a little bit creative. You have to be willing to say that I'm, if someone's going to, you know, be especially nasty with me, that like, "I'm not going to let that affect me." And that's harder to do.
Yeah.
It is very easy to be reactionary. But, you know, I always remind myself that people are heroes in their own stories. That they, everybody, I truly believe, acts on, you know, that what they're trying to do is what they think is a good thing to do. And so my, you know, and even if it's, if it gets very dark, if it gets angry, if it gets heated, I try to kind of put myself in their head and try to understand their perspective. And even when they're doing it, I just try to take it personally. And for me, it comes kind of naturally. For a lot of people it does. And so if that's something that you have trouble with, unfortunately...
Unfortunately, that's something I have experienced.
Yeah.
I worked in elder care for eight years. I had people yelling at me about things I never did or that might not have existed. And then in ReaderCon, I've had, I've had big-name science fiction authors writing very strange and abusive things to me. And it's just like, "Okay, well, that's how that's going to be and we're not going to interact anymore." So it's, yeah, that's, I know the feeling of like, sometimes it feels like maybe this is too much heat. But you just kind of need the courage of your convictions to say, "Okay, but I'm doing the things I ought to."
Yeah.
Okay. A few months ago, you and Select Board Vice Chair Deborah Roberts started producing video summaries of your Select Board meetings. So what made you start doing that and how's it gone, would you say?
Yeah, so this is something I did by myself for a number of years. Probably, I'm kind of guessing, three or four years. When COVID hit, I was continuing to do them, but I'll be frank, like, at some point I burned out. And I just couldn't, I couldn't do it anymore. You know, everything was difficult. And when you're at a meeting now, it's 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, and you've got to do a half hour of video, you're just like, "I can't do it anymore." So, you know, I fell off and stopped doing it just out of exhaustion. And I did feel bad about it, but I just couldn't do it. But people would always say, "You should do those, man. Do them again. They're great. You know, they're really helpful." And I, you know, and I had police officers and people who worked in the town who'd say, you know, "I listened to it on my way into work and it was just helpful to kind of get just an idea of what was going on and see if there's anything that I, you know, should look more into." But also just, you know, citizens of the town as well. And so I kept that in mind. And this year, you know, I asked the Vice Chair Deborah Roberts, who's really great with these kinds of things.
Yeah.
A really personable person, very smart, very thoughtful.
Has a show on Smack.
Yeah, yeah. And just, you know, just like a, you know, a great colleague, a wonderful person. I'm so grateful to know her. I asked her if she'd do it with me. She said, "You know, let's give it a go." And we did a couple and sometimes we aren't able to do them if the night goes especially late. But we're, we're trying to stay on track. Because even if we have to relay information, if it's a very non-controversial meeting where you're just essentially checking some boxes, then, you know, there's not a whole lot of value, necessarily. But...
And there's value because you're still letting us know what's going on in general, but it's not, yeah.
It's a way of saying there was nothing, nothing bad happened last night, nothing to worry about. It was just good, it's good news. But when there are controversial things, when there are things that are, that are, that people shouldn't be engaged with, they're not, maybe not aware of, then the value is significant. And we've had a couple of those and I, when I was doing these videos years ago, I was sometimes after relay, like, and I tried to be honest about it that,
Right.
you know, "This member thought that, this other member thought this." We're trying to work out a compromise, we're trying to find a middle ground. And, but, you know, that's when we would start getting like input from citizens who would say, "You know, I didn't know this was going on." I've asked thoughts as well. And, you know, one of my, from when I started, one of my guiding lights is really to make sure that I'm representing other people.
Yeah.
Right? So if nobody comes and shows up, then I'll, then I guess I'm here to represent myself.
Right.
But as soon as I start hearing that people care about something, then my interest is not, "What do I want?" It's entirely 100% in trying to figure out how to get them what they want. And so we've had issues like that with trash collection or with the elementary school votes, things like that. It's not my job to tell people how to, what our town should collectively look like. It's my job to try to figure out what they want and make it happen, whenever that is.
That's great. Have there been times when you and Deborah have disagreed and so you haven't wanted to summarize it the same way?
No, no. Well, I think we're both very tolerant of knowing and being willing to accept the fact that people have different opinions. But she and I, you know, have also very, just very similar, you know, views on life. So it, not that we don't disagree, but we never really clash. You know, it's just sort of like a matter of style, maybe I could do something a little different or whatever. I don't ever think she's, she's never, I've never been, been just, "I don't know what you're talking about, Deborah. That doesn't make any sense." Like, nothing like that.
Okay, great. Okay, well, actually, this lines up nicely. What do you see as sort of the biggest challenge facing Stoughton right now and facing us going forward?
Yeah, yeah. So we've got a lot of very unusual pressures as a town. Some of them are sort of like, they're like good problems to have. I'll go through a couple. I mean, one of the ones that I find, this is one of the good problems to have, is we are, compared to our surrounding towns, we are in unusually good financial shape. Easton, Bridgewater, Rainham, all tried to pass over rise. All of them failed. The effect of it is going to be loss of services. And in many cases, not, even though the major driver for those increases had to do with education.
They pull from elsewhere.
Yeah, they've got to pull from everywhere. And so there, maybe some of those towns are looking at losing police officers, first responders, firefighters, librarians, everybody, right? So we don't have that problem. We are financially in very, very strong shape, which is great. We have, as a board, I think we've made some good policy decisions, but also we have a town manager who is brilliant and has helped direct us in some really great ways. And more than just having good ideas, he actually is able to make them into realities. So we are...
In that better shape when you started? Like, because I've heard, what I've heard is that it's only in the last couple of years that we have really gotten our act together financially. And I'm interested in kind of your perspective on it. Is that, like, were we in the same boat as like Rainham and Bridgewater and whatnot?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We were, we were at least as bad, if not worse. We were making the same mistakes. We used, it was called free cash, which is money that we didn't use in the prior year, money that came in through municipal operations, like ambulance services or something like that, or hotel fax or something.
Okay.
That we would use that money to fund our budgets. And it's sort of like, it's considered like one-time money. You don't, you can't guarantee that you're gonna have that same money next year. But if you're increasing your budget to accommodate that by funding services and then that money doesn't come in the next year,
Right.
then you're gonna have to lay a bunch of people off. It's very dangerous. It's...
Yeah, it's diehard. And to mouse living for a whole town.
Exactly. We were, we were doing that a lot. Our budget depended on it. And even with all this additional free cash that we had, we were still finding ourselves in like a $2.5 million deficit. And every year, that deficit got smaller. Two and a half to half a million to 60,000 to, you know, and so forth. Because we had town managers who were courageous and thoughtful and we had a Select Board that was, I think, making some thoughtful decisions and willing to make sometimes very difficult decisions. And also a school committee, who, the time I've been working with them. They are a little bit siloed. They kind of like, they really just, they are all thoughtful citizens of the town, but their concerns are with the schools, not necessarily with the greater government. However, I have never really had an interaction with anybody on the school committee who didn't appreciate the impact that their decisions had on the larger community. And so they've always worked great with us and we've been able to get things accomplished together.
So would you say that the deficit went down primarily through creative budget cutting or primarily through revenue raising? Like, presumably there was a mix, but like, what was the balance like there? Were we, were we just overspending and then all we had to do was spend on smarter things? Or were we not raising enough and then we came up with great ways of making more?
It was, some of it was what I consider somewhat wasteful, right? We have, like, if you don't, I'll just give you one example.
Sure.
The South School, right? It's very expensive to maintain a building that's in horrible shape.
Right.
And by, even though we're investing in a better school and that can cost us some money, in the long term, that's going to be that benefit to us, financial. And so you're not gonna have to maintain, you know, sort of like having a house with no windows and then you've got to have the heat on or the air conditioning on all the time to cool it. The fact is that that's all very wasteful. And, but we've also had a lot of, there's been projects that kind of maybe slip under most people's radar. That we laid sewer down all of Park Street. The effect that's gonna have for the town is gonna be gigantic. And we're gonna continue to see improvements. There's built, you know, if you drive down Park Street,
Yeah.
you kind of look around, you see it's pretty rural, restaurant here and there. And then the second you hit the Brockton Line, stores everywhere, right? Well, it's because they have sewer and we don't, right? So there's things, there's things we could be doing there, we will be doing there. We typically didn't have any, there was cost cutting, but we didn't have like layoffs at any point.
Yeah. So it was, it was in many ways kind of raising the money to do the deferred maintenance and fixing of things that would then make you not bleed money out through those projects, yes?
Smart investments and internally to Town Hall at least, there was an effort to, wherever possible. We didn't do any layoffs, but as people retired or left, I was like, "Sort of rethink through how to find efficiencies for that work." And we had, you know, with our fire department, they do bring in a lot of revenue for the town through their ambulance services to ensure that they have the facilities that they need, which is expensive again, but what we put out, we get back tenfold. So just trying to be thoughtful about the investments who makes the town.
So when surrounding towns are like cutting their fire departments or their ambulance services or something, then if ours get called out to help them, then they have to pay us and we're kind of benefiting from a bad system?
Yeah, well, that's the problem that I was referring to is it's a problem that's good to have is that on the one hand, if they're, as they're losing firefighters and they lose ambulance service, they'll be calling us. There'll be, there'll be a lot of mutual aid requests on the one hand, which does help us financially. But it also taxes our fire department. And we have to be mindful of the fact that we are, what we're doing to human beings who are here to help and protect us and how hard we're pushing, we're working them. And so that's sort of balancing that, trying to figure out, you know, given our, the change in our financial position relative to our neighbors, the impact that's gonna have on us, the people who work here. We've got to, I think, be very thoughtful about that and develop a thoughtful plan. Thankfully, we have a, you know, a very thoughtful fire chief who's already thinking through these things.
That's great.
Already, you know, mindful of it. And our firefighters, they are some of the most dedicated people I've ever seen in my life and they will do anything for anybody. So they work very hard. I just, I hope that they don't push themselves harder. they don't push themselves harder than, than.
Cause you can have wear and tear on people, just like you can have wear and tear on engines.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's something I, I say all the time is that, you know, people will say that, that, you know, they work for me like a machine or something like that. And I, I try to correct them on that because people who run machines maintain them.
Yeah.
Right? And, but we don't, we don't always put as much time and energy into maintaining the people that we have. Uh, and that's not just municipal, that's, that's, uh, an American trade, partly. But get vacation time, spend time with your family. Uh, don't burn yourself out. And, and for, for managers to know that we have to be thoughtful, that, that, uh, in order for people to be able to, uh, you know, provide the services that we're asking them to provide, they have to be treated, you know, at least as well as machines. You've got to give them the chance to, to maintain themselves, get rest, uh, and, and not push them too hard.
Yeah, that's great. Um, oh, another challenge that I'd heard of and I'm interested in an update on if we have one is, uh, what's the, what's the deal with our trash collection? Incineration, shipping somewhere situation?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a, uh, sort of mid negotiation. It's like a multi-pronged thing. So, uh, can't get too much into the details, but, um, what's, what everyone ought to be aware of, and I think that there's been an effort to inform people about this, is that, um, is that trash pickup, you know, there's, there's, um, something I, I find very beautiful about the fact that you just put a bunch of your garbage in the yard and then you never have to worry about it ever again, right? Same thing inside the house. You just sort of flush the toilet and your problems are gone, right? As, but the fact is that the problem isn't gone. You just gave it to somebody else. And so when we are collecting trash, the people who do it are phenomenal. Uh, and they, they, they work very hard and they, and they serve the town well. However, they are also just bringing the trash someplace else. And, and the places where we would be bringing trash, uh, are getting fewer and fewer, they're getting more expensive. And so that the costs of those things are, are getting, um, are, we're, we're projecting them to be, uh, pretty unsustainable for us. And so we're trying to figure out, um, how to, how to manage those costs.
So the, so the, the complaint is not with our trash services. It's not like we're doing that inefficiently and we want to cut jobs or something. It's that what do we do with the actual physical trash?
Yeah.
Where is that going to go? And how is that going to be paid for rather than, uh, you know, what, what are the fates of the people collecting?
Exactly. No, it's a, it's a downstream problem and it has nothing to do with like, our, our guys are great. Our people are wonderful. Uh, and I, and I'm a strong believer in, in maintaining, uh, to the, the best of our ability, the services they're providing, the people that we have, we want to make sure that everyone's taken care of. But, um, we do have this downstream problem that we have to address and, uh, depending on where we end up, that might affect some of the things that we're doing. Uh, and what that might look like is still a little bit in flux. But we, we, we can't end up in a situation.
There's kind of the possibility of sort of package deals of like, oh, well, if you want to use our service for making the trash go away, then you have to use our.
Our base or whatever. Yeah, yeah. There might, there might be some, some, some change in the way the service goes, uh, defending it, depending on how we address that downstream problem. I guess, yeah, that downstream problem, we might have to do something different, um, and be flexible and thoughtful about that. But it doesn't change the fact that we still have a, a very strong responsibility to the people that we work that with and the people that, that work on behalf of the town. And I, I take that extremely seriously. We, uh, I've never been involved in a layoff, uh, even through some really, really tough financial times through COVID. Uh, that was never on the table. So, uh, so whenever we've had to find some other way, uh, it is always included. Protecting the, the people who work for the town.
That's great.
It's like the primary feature on it. Has to protect people that work for the town.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, let me see my timing. Yeah, I'll be okay. What excites you about Stoughton's future?
You know, a lot, you know, I think, I think, um, there's, uh, as a reflect on politics in general, certainly the, the ones that we are involved with in our own town. Not to oversimplify it, but I feel like there's, there's always this, um, uh, strong push and pull between optimism and pessimism. And you can almost like, you know, maybe assign like political parties have, having one feature or another, uh, or, or, um, you know, just idea ideologies having one way or another. And I think we have a lot to be optimistic about. This still have to be very realistic and we have to, we can't, we, we ought to dream big. But then when you actually get to like, you know, creating it, you have to be realistic. But, um, I think we have a lot of, of wonderful opportunities for, for the town. I think, um, where we, yeah, as a New England town, I, I grew up in other areas of the country. I grew up in New York. I grew up in Illinois, New Jersey and, um, in Maryland. And, uh, the historical significance of the places I've lived was not always, uh, as really relevant to people's lives.
Yeah.
As New England. So here there's, there's a really strong push to maintain the history. In other places, you just, you know, the building's old, tear it down. Who cares? Right?
Yeah.
But, but here like there's a strong push to, to, to respect the past and, and, you know, I, I want to honor that. But I do also acknowledge, I have to acknowledge that, uh, sometimes that nostalgia.
Gets in our way.
Gets in our way a little bit of progress. Now, it's a balancing act. So you've got to decide what you, what you care more about. But, uh, you know, I've talked to people about, uh, changes that have gone on in the town.
Yeah.
And, uh, and they can sort of say what they wish they had. And it always, to me, it always sounds like it probably, what it probably looked like when they were a teen.
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody just wants to be a kid again.
Yeah.
It's like, well, why, why can't you maintain the building that lets me be a child?
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, there's something I discovered years ago is that the, the best movie music that ever existed was always what you were listening to when you were seventeen.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I, I respect that. I, you know, I think it's, it is important to preserve the, the past and we make strong efforts to do that. We're doing that at the train station.
Yeah.
But also we, we can't sort of be pessimistic about change, right? But things are changing.
Okay. I'm going to bother you and ask for a specific. What is a, a specific change that is either coming or you want it to happen? And people have been mad at you about it, but we need it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one of the, um, uh, to me, it's, it is a no brainer. I think there's a lot of people who, uh, will push back on it. I have pushed back on it and are much more reticent to, to agree with me. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with having that, that debate. But it has to do with, uh, senior housing, uh, and also specifically housing in the downtown.
Okay.
Our downtowns, um, has, has issues that are, are going to be very difficult for us to be able to have any influence over. We have two state roads going through the middle of our downtown.
Right.
And so our ability to impact, uh, what that might look like is limited by our interactions with the state and what they're, they'll allow. So we kind of have to work within a certain framework. And, you know, as I, as I recall talking to a historian, a lot of our roads developed because they were, uh, just sort of natural pathways from people's farms to the local church.
Yeah.
And now we're kind of inherited this like three hundred year old, four hundred year old.
Yeah.
Set of roads, um, that are really conducive to, I've seen worse, but not, not conducive to, to change. But we need housing. Uh, housing, especially senior housing, I think is, is the most important. In my, this anecdotal, but I, I live in, on a street that has all capes, uh, which are typical starter homes. It's a small house, you know, I, we live in a modest house and, and a lot of people in our neighborhoods do. And there's, there's people of, who have been there for, uh, decades, the people who have been, who are now seniors. And there's, and there's a lot of, whenever those sell, that is usually like a new family coming. And, um, I think that people are sort of forced to use those essentially as senior housing, uh, because they're, because they're, it's difficult for seniors to find housing that it's, it's, it's like more convenient and probably even cheaper to stay in the house that they're in than it is to try to sell it and find a, find a place, you know, near your kids, near, near everything you know. And so.
It's not the best kind of house to age in.
Yeah. And, but yes, and they're not set up for, for that. There, and so, uh, and it's a lot of maintenance, a lot of work. To have housing, people should do whatever they want, but I, what I don't want is people to get stuck in, stuck in their houses because they have no options.
Right.
And I think we have enough of that, 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 um, that I think it'd be helpful to have, uh, senior housing that allows people to still live in the town, uh, have a better quality of life, uh, have lower expenses, have easy access to things, uh, and, uh, and be able to, you know, live their lives and enjoy their lives.
Yeah.
The benefit to the community is that they're here.
Yeah.
We continue to, to enjoy their presence. Uh, and also the houses that they sell. Our kin will, will more likely than not be bought by people who are, who are, uh, who are younger or young families, who are not, not only capable, but also interested in investing more in the community. Their interests are in, in, in investment versus retired, somebody who's retired, who's, you know, realistically, their interest is in preserving their income.
Right.
Right? So they just have, uh, the, if we can sort of activate these, these investors, uh, into our housing, uh, we, we have, uh, a really tremendous benefit.
For, for.
Now, you know, there's, there's still a lot you got to be mindful of, right?
Yeah.
Bring a lot of families in. Now the schools are, are, uh.
Have more kids.
Have more kids than them. There's a lot of work there.
Yeah.
So managing that is, is also an important thing, but that's one area where I think I could see people disagreeing with it. Ultimately, I, I don't see any way around it. We're an aging population. Uh, the, the baby boomers have been, uh, the tsunami that we've known was coming for decades. And, uh, any effort that we've, anybody's taken to, to, to fight a resolution to that has been cast to the side. We don't want that, you know, we don't, we don't need this. Well, now we need it. Now we're going to need it and we're going to need it now. So I think we gotta start working on that.
Okay, cool. I have a lighthearted question for you. In your, in your first TV appearance here, eight years ago, I looked it up. You mentioned that you hoped your son Reed, who was five at the time, would become interested in town politics as he grew up. So has that materialized?
A little bit, a little bit. And he's not watching the meetings, uh, but he's very well informed.
I wouldn't wish that.
He's well informed about the issues that are going on. Um, he, he's shown up to me, you know, I've been out there holding signs for things that I felt strongly about. And he's right there next to me holding them as well. So, um, he knows what's going on and he's, he's active. Getting involved, one of the things I'm most grateful about it is the fact that, uh, that the fact that he gave him exposure to what this looks like, right? To, uh, I mentioned, actually mentioned this, this has been a, a theme of my, uh, you know, the last 10 years of mine. I mentioned this in that interview. Is that, you know, one of the, uh, most rewarding things about doing this is that, is that when you're able to take responsibility for other people, it's sort of like a gift that it sort of pays for itself, right? It, it's, it's great to feel like, you know, somebody who's hungry, you can get them a sandwich. Somebody who needs shelter, you can help them find, find it. All, all the time, we're getting calls from people who have some unique set of problems. And our government, just like all governments, can be bureaucratic. And the question is like, you know, what, what form do I need to fill out? Like what box do I need to check? Who do I have to call to like get this thing? And being able to take those, those two ends and sort of plug them together and say, you have a need. I know we have the service. We may not have the right, um, conduit to get you what you need, but you know, let's, let's get these things working. To actually make people's lives better, uh, and to care about other people is, has just been like, uh, very rewarding to me. And I, it's something I, I take, I, I'm just so honored to have the opportunity to do. And, uh, having now a thirteen year old son, he's, he's seen that with me. He's seen that with, with his mother. She does tremendous amount of work. Uh, my wife, Kim, in, uh, special education.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that because I, I kind of think of the two of you as a power couple because, 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 uh, Kim is co-chair of CPAC, doing all this special education work in, um, in Stoughton. She's also the CPAC liaison to the Hanson School.
Yeah.
And I met her through PTO there.
She's still a PTO.
And, and she's still, you know, involved even though, even though Reed is no longer a student there. Uh, I guess once a hawk, always a hawk.
Yeah.
But, uh, do you, so you both sort of live and breathe this kind of community involvement?
Very much. Uh, we get a lot of, uh, a lot of reward for it. It's, um, uh, it's, even though we, we care very much to help other people, I can't help but say there's like a selfish, selfishness to it. The fact is it's just very rewarding, uh, to be able to, to, to help people. And so, um.
I mean, you've got to be getting some kind of internal reward or why would you?
Why would you do it, right? Especially because you, you think of beating every now and then. So you've, you've got to have a reason to get back on the horse. But the, um, uh, but it is rewarding and, and to be able to, uh, provide that example, because in, in both of our families, we had, Kim's family is, is loving and caring, uh, but they didn't really get involved in, in civics. Uh, same was mostly the case with my, with my family. Great people, uh, one trained for the world, but we never got this kind of exposure to, um, to, uh, you know, just the, the, the act of, you know, evolved in something, caring about something and actually making it happen. And so, um, uh, I'm, I'm grateful that you had the chance to see it. And, and so I, I feel like it's, it's, uh, it's been rewarding.
That's awesome. Okay. It's time for the smackdown, um, which is, which is my question when I ask you to rant about something. So what's something that bothers you about town or national politics these days? That you need to rant about something that, you know, maybe Kim or friends of yours are like, stop talking to me about this. You would just go on forever. What is that thing? That thing that, that just keeps bothering you that you just want to knock out of the?
Oh yeah. I mean, there's, there's a few things. I try not to get, get bothered by things, but there is one thing that, um, that keeps on resurfacing and it's, uh, it's not going to be a surprise to you at all, but I think that, um, politics, um, so, well, we'll talk about politics in two sentences. One is there's just like, we're all living in a neighborhood and we're trying to accomplish something collectively. Like I call that kind of politics, right? We gotta, we gotta, we've got to collaborate, coordinate, and we're going to have disagreements. Uh, and then there's like this, this other like, you know, clown show of politics.
Right.
And it's the clown show that, that it, you, you find that bleeding into the local stuff. And the fact is that like, you know, I'm just not interested in the games, uh, you know, I, it, we can, we can do this all day. I'm, you know, if you, if we were going to do it, I'll do, oh, fine. I, I can do it too. But the fact is that like, we have real serious problems. We got like real serious issues here. We're trying to figure out how to fix. Could you stop screwing around, right? Uh, could you just get serious? Because like, if you, if you're not willing to take yourself seriously, I can't take you seriously either. And, uh, and I, I want to accomplish something. I don't want to just play a game. And I, I've seen this happen a couple of times. It happens in elections where, you know, um, there's one that happened years and years ago, an election I was involved in, uh, I won it prevailing. But, uh, after it was all over, you know, I was talking to somebody who was on the opposite side. They're like, yeah, we're just, you know, throwing things against the wall, see what sticks. I thought you were being sincere, you know, I thought you, I thought you were like, I thought you showed up to this thing and had, and we're trying to like, actually care about something, not just play a game to see who can get the most points. And, uh, and that's what, what I think bothers me is, um, is that we get sucked into these, these games and where, because, you know, you're, because you follow the Red Sox, you have to hate the Yankees.
Right, yeah. Where, where, where politics becomes, um, in some ways, it has to be a team sport because you have people who disagree with each other on a whole bunch of things. And they form their little teams of who, who agrees about this and who agrees about that.
Yeah.
And it, it only makes sense that they would fight against each other and, uh, support the members of their team and be against the other members. But there, there does kind of reach a point in that process where people are relaying to it more as if it were a team sport and not as if it was about to affect everybody's lives.
Yeah.
And where it's like, where you, where you just want your team to win this election without really caring about, okay, but is, is the person theoretically from your team who is running for this thing qualified? Are they like, do, do they, are they going to be good in this job, et cetera? And, you know, yeah, on each, on each little part of the, of the agenda, you know, okay, we want someone who cares a lot about the environment. Yes, agreed. But like, if we're, if we're at the point of, of, um, fighting against each other where we are, you know, willing to make up things that aren't true about like what's going on in Stoughton's environmental planning or whatever. If we're just like playing this weird little gotcha game of trying to, um, win on points rather than accomplish important accomplishments.
Yeah.
Then it's, then it's kind of, we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah. We see it play out, you know, and people sniff it out right away. Uh, so it's, ultimately it solves, the problem is solved, it's solved. But if someone has, uh, an objection, uh, and you're like, okay, well, fine, maybe I'm wrong. Do you have any alternative solutions?
Yeah.
And the answer is no, I just think you're an idiot. Well, okay, cool. Like this.
This has been a waste of my time.
Okay. So you've got to, I, you know, I guess you want me to go back to the drawing board until I come up with something you're satisfied with, but like.
But if they think that it's because you're a dumbass.
Yeah.
Then like. Then like, they're not going to be happy with whatever solution you, like, going back to the drawing board is not going to help. Because as long as you're the one going back to the drawing board, they're just going to hate it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's like, there's an insincerity about it too, where it honestly just doesn't matter what you do. They just, they just don't like to look on your face. And, and, you know, there's, there's a time and place for that. The fact is that, 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 when I first started on the select board, I had this like really weird feeling. It was like the first day.
Yeah.
We're making some decisions. And I, I turned to the person who was the chair at the time, who was, who had, you know, 10 times experienced anybody else on the board did at the time. And so I feel, I just feel kind of weird about this. I feel like we're kind of like playing government, like, like wearing, wearing my, I'm wearing my father's suit and pretending.
Right, yeah. Yeah, like playing house except in government, yeah.
And, you know, and I, I really genuinely felt that. I can't recall what his counsel was on that. But I, after a couple of years of this, I don't feel like that at all. I feel like it is a very bizarre thing to make decisions that, that have an impact. And to see them actioned and, oh, God, it's so wonderful to see them work out.
Yes.
Because you're really doing, using your best intuitions.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, there's, I forget exactly why I was kind of mentioning this, but I do feel like that, that, you know, we, if we're being sincere with each other, then I think we do have a really good opportunity to get some, something accomplished. I, I love, as I mentioned before, I, I'm perfectly fine being wrong about things. I love when someone teaches me something new. And what I would love to be able to do is find, have always loved doing, is finding a compromise, finding a way where like, hey, maybe both of us can walk away with enough of what we're looking for that we're both satisfied.
Yeah.
It's when it's, you know, no, you're wrong. I don't care what you have to say. I'm going to vote against everything you ever, ever say.
Because what would satisfy me is you losing, rather than.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than like something happening in the town. It would be like, what would satisfy me about, about, you know, the trash is you losing, right?
Yeah, just, I just, and then we'll, I'll sort of take, I'll, if I, if I also, you know, don't get anything out of this, I'm okay with that so long as you didn't. And I'm okay if the town suffers, so long as you don't, so long as you don't.
Right.
You know, have, have a way.
Happy.
So that's, that's, that's my round. I think, I think we need to take ourselves more seriously. I think we, the, the, my background, educational background is in philosophy. And I very strongly studied for a long time and sort of live by the things I read within Stoic areas of philosophy.
Yeah.
I do feel strongly that there are things we can control, there's things that we can't control. The things we can control, we should focus on, do everything that we can to make them happen. The things we can't, a lot of national politics.
Yep.
Has nothing to do with us, right? And there's nothing I can do to change a lot of things that are happening around the world.
Yeah.
But what I can do is like fill a pothole, or like, or, you know, help, help a senior find some housing that's appropriate in this town. I can do those things. And I, and I feel like those, that's where I want to spend my energy.
That's right.
Take it seriously, because it's serious stuff. It's people's lives.
Okay, I have one final question. And because I assume you can't talk much about it. But I feel like I'd be remiss if I had you on the show and didn't mention that this station is suing the town, as well as you and Joe McCrisky as individuals.
Yeah.
Over alleged free speech violations.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't ask you to comment on the merits of ongoing litigation. I don't think that's something you can do. But instead, let me ask you this. Assuming that SMAC does not drop the lawsuit, has anyone given you a sense of how long this process could take before we all get to some kind of resolution on the case? Because the taxpayers, obviously, since the town is being sued, we also have a stake in the result.
Yeah.
And I, I'm kind of curious, where, how long does that process take? What's, what's that going to look like? And has any lawyer told you how, what that's going to look?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, I can't speak too much about it unfortunately. It's just kind of in the hands of the lawyers. So some of these, sometimes these things can take a very, very long time. And sometimes they take a long time, and then all of a sudden, things happen very quick. And so I don't know where it all ends up. I'm always shocked at how long, you know.
Litigation takes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have this, this right to a speedy trial, but I guess speedy is in the eye of the beholder. Because I've seen some things go forever. And in the, in the other litigation, I've been involved, as I remember the select board, in litigation for the town quite a bit. It happens frequently. So, and what we'll find is, you know, that we're sort of closing up a case that started 11 years ago, something like that. So it's, it's really hard, hard to say. I think the whole thing's, you know, fortunate, obviously. I, I feel very confident within the lawsuit itself or the filing.
Yeah.
Everything that references me, I think refers to things I actually said online. So to be honest, feel free to like, look at my, my record.
Right.
And I feel.
It's like verifiable.
It's all verifiable. So, so I've got no secret conversations or anything like that. And I registered my, my own sense of, you know, just disapproval publicly. That is not a, not a violation of the law, it's not a violation of civil, civil rights, just to tell them that you don't agree with what they're doing. So I feel pretty confident that, that I personally don't have a problem. I wish it hadn't happened, but here we are.
Yeah, I mean, there's this kind of weird thing because, because both station boards and government are subject to turnover. It makes, like, part of the reason that I'm interested in the timeline is that sometimes you will end up in a situation where the people who brought the lawsuit aren't there anymore, aren't there anymore, and the people the lawsuit is against aren't there anymore. And it's like, what is going on here? Why is it, why has this taken so long that it's no longer even relevant? Like, what? And, and then you get some kind of weird settlement and you're like, okay, well, the town is going to pay $3,000 over 10 years or whatever, you know, like, to, to people who aren't there anymore. And so it's, you know, the, sometimes the deferred resolution is, is kind of part of the problem itself, you know?
Yeah, you know, I'll speak sort of generally about litigation is that, that the ones I've been involved in, you can tell that there was some sense of like, I'll show them, right?
Yeah.
And, and the fact is that it takes, it takes forever. And by the time you get there, it's like a joke that took five years. And you're like, ah, the punchline wasn't as great as I thought it was going to be. So, you know, it's, unfortunately loses its, its power after a while. And maybe this intentional, I mean, it ends up in the hands of a bunch of lawyers who duke it out. And they try to compare law and, and form cases to see if what's true and what's not true. Right now, I think all there is, is a, is a, I forgot what's referred to, but.
Especially the kind of.
Sort of claim, right?
Yeah.
So, so we kind of hear, hear the claims of SMAC. And then there's questions of whether or not any of those are actually against the law, right?
Right.
If someone, if you say they filed a, filed a civil rights because they said I, I talked funny, then somebody gets to decide if that actually qualifies as a violation. And so, well, let's let the, let the experts do their work and continue to try to do the things that we think are the best for the, for each other, for the town.
Sounds good. Well, I didn't want to end on a downer, but I, I went and did.
No, no, you got, I mean, the fact is, it is, it's important. I'm grateful that you did, even though it's, it's, you know, there's like, I wish I could say more. Because like, the fact is that like, I try really not to keep any secrets on the one hand. On the other hand, like, this is not just my story to tell. So.
Absolutely.
And also, it's a very complicated system. It's in there for, for a reason. And we'll just let the, let the system work the way it's supposed to work.
Sounds good. Okay. Steve Kavy, thank you so much for coming on the show. And I hope to talk to you soon.
Really appreciate it. Thanks so much.